How's he doing?
Mayor, Council, good to see you guys.
Did you have some visitors in your session?
We did. We had an appearance for an item not on the agenda, yes. We do have a couple, we did have a couple of things that I believe are on your agenda. We had a public hearing on the request of Rick Werner to rezone property at 627, 631, and 635 South Sprig from C1 to Central Business District. That is the, I think it was the Rosebed Inn over there on Sprig in 74. In any event, Mr. Werner has, I believe, it's three of those lots. And I think another three are going to be coming in front of us soon. But we unanimously approved the rezoning to CBD on those. The other item that I believe you guys have is just a subdivision, Platt River View Gardens, number two. Basically consolidating several lots into one. And I believe there's going to be a structure build that was going to cross some lot lines. So just allow for that.
Yeah.
So those are the only two items, I think, that you guys have.
I don't believe we have the CBD items.
Yeah, that might be on the next one.
They're not, they're not on, that's not on tonight, no.
Yeah.
But it'll be good to get moving that forward.
Yeah.
Be good to get that filled again.
Yes.
Very good. So that'll be, that'll be coming to us. Counsel, any questions of P and Z?
What's his vision? If I remember correctly, I think he's just going to do some rentals with it. At least in the short term.
Any other questions? Mr. Bertrand? Okay.
All right. Thank you all.
Thanks for coming. Beautiful business property of the month, Commerce Bank. Jeff, hold up. Any members of the committee here?
And Jeff, I want you to know that I voted yes.
This can't turn into a vote.
I know.
Well, it's again, as we do monthly, through the auspices of our committee, honor a business as beautiful property of the month. And this, this is really working for us. It's getting to be very noticeable, and I think it's spreading. Have a very visible location. And it is great that businesses such as yours take a real interest in, in the beauty of our, beauty of our community. We're working hard on that internally, and we're working hard on that through the committee and through homeowners also. So I say congratulations to you and your, and your business. Keep up the good work. And we put together, we made that presentation. Thank you for being here. And Robbie, thank you for spearheading and helping on the committee. Did you get a picture?
I certainly can, yes.
Oh, okay.
They're with you guys, sorry. Thank you. Big smiles.
Thanks a lot, I appreciate it.
Next on the agenda, Epic presentation.
Hi.
How are you? Awesome.
Okay. So yeah, I would.
Okay, I'll hear it just a second, I'm sorry. And Epic is great, so we could talk about that for a second while we push this button neurotically until it comes up.
I'm with Epic, early prevention and access. Maybe we are a substance abuse prevention coalition. Are maybe you familiar with Epic at all? A little bit? So I'm relatively new to Epic. I actually just joined Epic in June. So I'm still new as well. I was a social worker within Cape for a couple of years, working in housing, almost in a state, and now for a while. So it's a little bit of a transition for me, but not too big of a transition.
That's my.
What? I did, yeah, for sure, definitely. Okay. So we're located, we actually are located out of the Attorney's Office, two blocks from the street. Since really what Epic is all about is much more community impact, we don't do a lot of direct services. So it's not like we're in office, we're people who just walk in and do their services. We're trying to directly impact our community at large. That is where we are located, some of our contact info. I'm just giving you a little bit of the rundown, rundown of who our staff is. Our director is Mercedes Holt, she's an intern here in Cape Girardeau. Shelley Wood, she's a social worker, and she specifically coordinates the PALS program. I'll tell you a little bit about her here in a minute. I am the DFC project and program coordinator. DFC does a drug-free community grant. And then Kay Azuma works at the Community Carrying Council, she's our budget specialist. We have a board, which is composed of nine individuals from our committee. Many of those individuals come from the various sectors of our community. So we serve, Cape Girardeau County is our primary county of service. Don't serve any other counties, that is a requirement from our DFC grant. A little bit of background, I won't go into this too much, but I'm sure some of you are probably familiar with United Way, the Community Carrying Council. It's an assessment that was done back in 2000. From that assessment came the need that there needed to be more youth and adult substance abuse education and prevention in our community. And so a committee was formed outside of that reassessment, which then prompted the coalition to be formed, which we were known for a long time as Southeast Use Prevention Coalition. It wasn't until 2013 that we actually changed our name to Epic. It's been really interesting jumping on board with Epic. There's tremendous amount of value that goes into this kind of job as far as getting people aware of who you are and what you do. So that's been a little bit of my elements for me. But we are known as Epic, and our tagline is Preventive Substance Abuse before it starts. We did receive the DFC grant in 2010. That is. The DFC grant has a two-year lifetime limit. And we are in our last four years of that grant. So we are going to be looking at sustainability as a potential issue for us as we continue to do or we do receive some under, other funding from Missouri Foundation for Health, and also from Missouri Department of National Health as well. But that DFC grant was huge, and certainly there are the factors that we've been able to do.
Somebody started, I'm sorry.
So we pause for a second, we pause our plug, please, there. This tells you a little bit more about the sector, how they're represented as part of the part of our coalition. So faith organizations, city government, media, substance abuse experts, you can see a lot of those there. I think that's really important for any health coalition, is to make sure that you have lots of representatives, lots of stakeholders that are there to provide their input at a community level. We are structured by the two committees. We have an advocacy committee, program committee, media committee, resource committee, and youth outreach committee. Nicolette Brennan is actually the chair of our media committee. And advocacy committee is chaired by Alan Wood, a Jackson School social worker. Our youth committee chair is Bethany Beggs for Big Brother, Three Sisters. So again, just to give you an idea of some of the different individuals in our community that are helping our coalition thrive and be successful. So our mission of the coalition is to join together in a common effort to build a healthy and safe community, reducing the risks of alcohol, tobacco, and other drugs while promoting healthy attitudes and behaviors of youth in Southeast Use Prevention. It's really easy. So how we, what we really try to focus on are positive norms. I'm going to share just a little bit more about that in just a minute. Building a healthy and safe community and building protective factors in it. One thing that we really look at are those risk factors, like dropout rates, like power breaks, all those things that we typically know as risk factors. But what we really want to focus on too are protective factors. What are the things that we can provide as a community that help kids less likely to engage in those risky behaviors? At their school programs are wonderful ways to do that. Making sure families have what they need are wonderful ways to do that. But there are different points of view, really. So I did want to share with you just a little bit of data. And a really important piece of data, where we traditionally would receive information was Missouri Student Survey. Is anybody familiar with Missouri Student Survey? So it used to be required through DESI that every school participated in that. Several years ago, they backed off from that. And now schools have the option to participate in that survey or not. It's incredibly important, so ready, because that's where you get a wealth of knowledge about what is happening, what are kids using, what are they not using, and also what their perception is. If I use alcohol, what are other people going to think about me? If I use alcohol, do I think it's really a risk here now? So that perception is really important. Schools, since they have been able to opt out, many have opted out of that. And so it's something we're really going to have to work with our local students on. We've received a lot of information about that. And I, and I, schools are, they have so much to do, and it does take a lot of time. But it is something that we need to know as a community, so we have power to know that and what kids are doing. It's difficult to get at that. But a couple of things that I extrapolated that I think are kind of important, you can see, and this just gives you an idea. So Cape Girardeau County, this is student perception of harm of marijuana. So this, you can see a trend of 2010 and then looking at 2016. So you can see the perception of harm has gone down from 74% to 72%. The kids are thinking that using marijuana may or may not be that harmful. That's something we should pay attention to, right? Especially as we see marijuana starting to become legalized in other places. As a community, that says to me, the kids are thinking that it's not that harmful? That changes the conversation of how we're going to talk with them about that, right? The other one is student perception of harm, prescription drug misuse. So again, you see this going down. Perception of harm of using prescription drugs, misuse even, has gone down. So it doesn't seem as if they're as fearful, but they don't see it as harmful. So I think that's really important for us to know as a community. When kids are perceived that it's not that big of a deal, that changes how we're going to talk with them about that. It's not all to be lost, though, because we have seen some positive change. So here is age of first use of alcohol. So back in 2008, almost 12 years after, was the age of first use that kids were reporting that they were drinking alcohol. That's crazy to me, that's so alarming. But now we've seen that go up to 13, a little over age of 13. So we are seeing some indication that maybe we're getting some messages through there. Also, student perception of friends, feelings on student alcohol use, wrong or very wrong. So we're seeing a pretty nice little jump there from 2014 to 2016 as far as, okay, maybe my friends aren't that, this is so weird. So again, I think, I think maybe start to look at some of these trends. The data can be manipulated, but I think it's important that we try to get good data so that we know kind of best what we want to tell the kids about what they're doing. So what are some of the strategies that we utilize as far as some interventions? So we participate in the prescription drug take back day. We're having that coming up October 22nd. That's really important, because part of the prescription drug take back is not only environmental, but we don't want that, those medications going into our water system. But we also don't want medications being accessible to people who don't need, who have access to those medications. So the prescription drug takes back, take backs are really, really important. We do have two permanent drug drop boxes that they've supplied through the DFC grant. One of those is at the Cape Girardeau Police Department, other ones over at the Fire Police Department in Jackson. In April, Cape's drug take back got canceled, but Jackson had theirs, and we took back over three hundred pounds of, of, once they're funded, so I wish. So I think that's really, really important to do that, right? Especially as we see other communities suffering from a legal, really, that process. It's really, really important with the, with those medications. We also work with our local community on compliance checks. Making sure that local businesses are partying, doing the things they need to do. And I think most of those compliance checks have shown our businesses to be doing pretty well. I think there's probably some that struggle with it. I think more than we're seeing businesses pull up their department what they need to do. We also use social media campaigns and other PSAs. This one was particularly focused around harm reduction. We partnered with the university and we did this Dear Sover campaign. Basically, the idea is, is if you're underage and you were going to drink, make sure that you drew responsibility, you have a way that you're going to use it to get home. So we provided people with numbers so that they could call to get a ride home if they were choosing to drink. We also ran an ad about the cost of a DUI, the cost of a DUI. And then the cab ride, on the average, is six dollars. The average DUI is, is much more than that. So again, this is a harm reduction approach. We've got other media campaigns as well. One thing that we're really, really going to start to focus on is this idea of positive social norms. Because as much as we want to talk about the negative here a lot of the times, we need to remember that the majority of kids are doing the right thing. So how do we get that message out there that we, like all the other kids, the majority of kids can do the right thing, can do what everybody else is doing? So that's positive social norms. We're actually going to go to a really big conference, the University of Montana puts on, all about social norms, it's going to be in December. Something we really hope to bring back here and start. The university does this really well with their bystander posters that they have all around campus, that say, kids, most kids, in the average, people step up and do right thing. So it's another way to social change, ideally, perception. It's more normal for not being as angry as it is to be. And education, certainly we want to educate. We have Breakthrough Breakfast Series, which are home quarterly. Those are basically where we bring in some sort of speaker to facilitate a conversation and shed some light on some things that interest for a community. We get the land buys, we get the number of friends who come to those. We do have town hall meetings, one that we're working on now is specifically on underage drinking. We're going to have that on December 1st, and certainly we'll let the participants know when that's going to be. It's been really interesting, we reached out to you to talk with us about underage drinking and what they see as some of the issues. And some of the things that you'd said, really smart, as far as their perspective on drinking, we're really interested to engage with them, and have them tell us what can we do as adults to help understand underage drinking, and that they realize as they get older and older how I would touch on it. So it's really important to engage them, and I think that's really important. Was out at a conference not too long ago, and there was a youth group there, and she said, you know, they can't be about us without us. And I think that's so true. A lot of times, we talk about things as adults, and we make policy, and we don't even talk about the, talk with the, people who are going to be affected by that policy. So I think it's really interesting, I mean, really listening to them, and oftentimes they say, you never really ask us. I think that's really important. And we also certainly want to provide alternative activities that families can engage in, in a healthy way, in a positive way. We certainly know a lot of that has to do with cost, so we try to offer as many things as we can that are free. And we also want to partner with our local parks and restaurants, we're already doing wonderful activities. So we really look to reach out, engage with those activities that are already there. And so you can see just some examples of those there. One thing that we've started too is the Epic School Project. So we really want to work with schools and honor the work that they're already doing. They're already doing epic space programs in schools. We want them to tell us about that. They're already offering instructors and teachers training on, training, education on prevention and substance abuse. So we ask for schools to apply for the Epic School designation, and then we work with them on getting them lots of awareness, lots of promotion, and a stipend as well monetarily as well, if we continue to do some of the work that we're doing. Just received those applications. Historically, Jackson Middle School was the only one that applied. Last year, St. Mary's applied as well, and received that designation. And this year, we have a total of four schools that have applied, schools that decided about that. These schools are doing more, and they're more correct about that. And also with the Epic School Project, one thing we're thinking about trying to do too is working with those businesses that are doing the right thing. So those stores that are standing compliant, how can we show them the same idea, but you can write in what we do as a support group. So this is the one program that we do implement, it's the Epic PALS program. So it's basically where we take a recently adopted shelter dog, or a dog that is still in shelter, and foster, and find a foster for that dog. We have strongly partnered with Division of Youth Services, Girardeau Center here. We match up that dog with the youth, also add into that another caring adult mentor, who would work a six-week curriculum with that youth and dog. Dog gets a little bit of skill, big base, as a DFC grant is very much possibly, I mean, on both levels, actually, not purely about, but also for the youth. The youth really is a wonderful curriculum, and it's very much strong in care for education, strong on empathy, strong on patience. Well, we do a lot of journal, a lot of talking, where a lot of times they can tell us so much about how they relate to the evidence, and it's feeling rejected, how they cope with that. So again, it's basically just a social emotional learning curriculum. We hope that what they receive in that six-week curriculum, they can then take out, or at least from UIS, will have a protective factor of coping with some other stories. So we hope we hopefully lessen, particularly, those risky behaviors. We're in the middle of giving a qualitative evaluation with that right now. So we're kind of anxious to see what we find, and how we're going to reach a system. PALS, we're actually expanding as well. We typically did that with UIS, Division of Youth Services. We now just branched out and started working with Big Brother, Three Sisters, which is a perfect match, because they already have the mentor in place. It's also been interesting, because we were primarily doing with young men, now we're doing it with younger men. There's, there's some differences there, which have been really kind of fun, just to see how each, each area is different and how they interact in that. So that's really good to see, good partnership. We'd love to continue to expand that program and other types of programs like that, whether it's the arts, musics, and other things. We've been in discussion with Cape's art, with Cape Arts Council, trying to do some sort of other program between youth and mentors and arts, who are working on that as well. So we want to continue to expand that work. You go. We will do a little bit of fundraising. We do have a glow run that will be coming up, we do that on New Year's Eve night. It's another way that we can provide families an opportunity to do something fun together with that. We do have the Epic Off-the-Ball Art Auction, where we work with global artists, artists artwork, auction that off, and all of those proceeds, and get the work back. So that too, we are, a little bit about what we do. Any other questions?
Your own initiatives is important. In the surveys, you said optional, where that is, it doesn't make any significant that, that to me feel like more of a challenge?
I would say prior to, when they were mandatory, yes. I would say the last sample size was 124 kids out of 100. So that's not, that to me is not a significant sample size, I can obviously go on more. We have to be one sample, school, one small sector. So I think we do have to be careful with that, given this last sample. Absolutely. Yeah. And I think that's why it's so imperative, it would work personally through a day, but I know that's hard, I know that could get a lot of other things. We need to know.
That's your DFC grant space now, is it all at once, or does it?
Well, you know, it's one of the things, yeah, you sort of funding doesn't really get off, I mean, it's probably just. So we're really looking for more sustainable, and others, and so, might be a bigger question on, and some sort of, so to see. The basic just pass, I think it's a legislation called PALS. I think it's interesting to see what they have, that, that, as far as funding. So that's a really interesting thing to see.
What's the sense of that right now? What's the sense of the whole topic right now?
Pretty much, I believe, just, yeah. It sounds like a Missouri foundation for health, or health programs specifically. Fundraise, we fund this, and a little bit of that goes through our companies as far as, and now it connects to Department of Health, which is a small, but a good, that goes to ask.
Is there a foundation for that?
Yes, yeah. And they're changing stuff too, you know, they're always putting out new things, so we all need to put our eyes on that. Okay, thanks a lot.
Sharon Chapman, I live at 1752 Pembiscote. 1752 Pembiscote.
We got some strong concerns about the neighborhood. Honestly, have to call for police assistance of all kinds for various things. You got photos of the neighborhood, how it's been trashed up.
You told me to bring pictures.
We just want to find out, anything we can, get anything more done than just being done.
They built them as condos, which they're joined to, too. So the city can't force them to put a trash bin in the back because they're not apartments.
That's what we've been told.
That's what we've been told. But yet, he's renting them as apartments, and Gary Hill has checked them and has had to make some move, because there's only supposed to be three unrelated people living in that zone. And I know that one right now's got four or five living there. And it makes too much trash. There's between 20 and 30 vehicles on the street. And that makes it for a one-way street. The tra, like I said, the trash.
For a dead-end street, it's, it's like a racetrack.
Yeah. Somebody's going to get killed while they drive. The filthy language, they have these parties, and I don't have my camera on me, but I have seen them urinating out in the front.
Many times.
But if we can't take a picture, there's nothing the police can do about it, you know? We've been retaliated, we've had our house egged two or three times.
Twice.
And had rent signs put in our yard, and.
Had chair legs thrown and damaged the saddings.
Yeah. Damage.
It's all a result of college parties, primarily college parties. We used to be a full block of permanent residents. We are now the only permanent resident on that block. Everything else has become rental.
And not all of them are bad. I mean, it's just a certain group, and we called a week ago, it was like.
We could go Friday.
We could go Saturday morning, Saturday morning, and patrolman Owens come out, where they turned, this started at 9:30 in the morning. And then it was about 40 to 50 people in and out.
Probably over a period of an hour's time.
Yeah, and litter.
Even while Officer Owens was there, didn't faze him a bit.
No, they come walking in, drinking their beer. And this one girl had a 30-pack and a fifth of vodka, and she had a drink in her hand, and she said, let's get effin', you know? And when she raised her arm, she dropped a bottle of vodka. And I said, that's littering. He said, well, I can't go ask who did that. So he goes down, sweeps up the glass, and they're, they're just kind of laughing at him. But they didn't even get a ticket. I called about it today, and nothing's been issued on this.
What we called about primarily was loud music. When I come in, I come in from hunting at 9:15, and I called the police at 9:30 because of the loud music and loud, just hollering. There was, there was probably a dozen people in the backyard. And during the time, when I called, and the time the officer got there, there was probably another 15 to 20 came in and out, at least six or seven automobiles came in. Officer went up, Owens went up, and evidently mentioned to them about the loud music, okay? The loud music did go down after a while. Didn't go all the way down, but it went down some. The loud, the hollering, and that was louder than the music. Officer Owens says there's nothing he can do about that.
But the traffic, I mean, it makes, they use my driveway to pull over, you know? And they blocked my driveway, I don't know how many times I've called. And some police give a ticket to them, and others go knocking door to door, telling them leave their car, and say, oh, they've learned their lesson. It just seems like we can't get any help. And I've called down to talk to Chief Blair, he said his door was always open. They put me through to a nuisance recorder, you know, to give my name, and they'll call me back, nobody calls. Time Mesker says as long as the trash is in a bag, can't do nothing about it. I'm just getting fed up with our neighborhood.
Nothing seems to be consistent.
No. No, and you see, you see that all that trash. It's a health problem. We've never had mice until the last four years.
And snakes.
And snakes.
But anyway, please want to borrow your opinion, I'd, I'd like to, as Officer Owens mentioned the last time he's here, he says the ordinance changes all the time. Uh, I don't know how often ordinance gets, gets changed, but I would like to know where and how can I get a copy of it on a regular basis? Can I come here and get a copy of the, of the nuisance and noise ordinances, whatever? And how often do they really change? Do you have any idea? Who changes the ordinances?
Well, Council changes ordinances at the recommendation of staff, and we, we have been strengthening the nuisance ordinances, that is true.
Well, it says right here.
We've been, we've been working on that. I don't know if we've reached enough to help you or not.
We don't hear on this.
Mostly in your block, seventeen hundred block?
Seventeen hundred block.
Oh, it's all over.
It's, it's in the area. The area west of this corner is eight oh one Perry Avenue, it's the same problem. And the eight, nine hundred block of Perry Avenue is, uh, there's two or three, uh, party houses there too. You never know when it's gonna happen. I've, I've seen the streets up our blocks twice every year, twice every semester, before the semester starts and music, and then again, homecoming. It's usually, it's bad, if not worse, on homecoming weekend. I can allow for a little bit of that to a certain extent. But it's not just the seventeen hundred block of Pembiscote, it's nine, eight, nine hundred block of Perry, seventeen hundred block of New Madrid, seventeen hundred block of Dunkland, primarily.
How long have you been the only single family?
Well, we've got, we're the only owners. We have two families, yeah, we're the only owners.
How long's that, how long's that been?
Who's the last one passed away? Bob Nicholas? Lillian Steer, Bob Nicholas, and, uh, at least five years.
So you've been?
At least five years.
Alone as owners for five years?
They started building the condos across the street about ten years ago.
Mm-hmm.
That, that was totally vacant, that was a truck patch, uh, garden and flower bed, uh, owner.
Yeah.
I don't know how, how they got by with.
And he sold that to Mark Harold. Mark Harold built ten double condos, five double condos, sort of ten of them over there. He assured us he was gonna rent, not gonna rent them to college students, that's all that's there, primarily.
Soon as I walked out my door, front or back, all I see is trash cans and trash. And then it gets blowed, I called the city, it gets blowed out in the street, or they throw it in the street. It all gets washed down in plastic bottles, down to the sewer.
Okay, well, um, thank you for being here. Um, pay attention to that.
I think, I think staff did, did do a little bit of research on, I don't know if they had anything. Uh, staff did, both Development Services as well as Police, and I don't know if they have anything to add.
Um, I did check with Gary Hill regarding the history, and he's very familiar with the, the situation, and, um, I don't know that he has been out recently, but if, if there is concern about another occupancy violation, it's certainly something that we can look into again and, and have Alan look into that. And I, I believe Rodney has some information on recent calls for service, um, the most reason of which was for the loud voices, and if you'll recall, there was that, the constitutional challenge, which now, um, loud voices is considered freedom of speech, so Officer Owens was correct, that there is not anything that we can do in a situation like that.
That's another thing too. We're going to have to give peace disturbance when they come in at nine o'clock, bring me up two hundred and thirty in the morning. Is that disturbing the light piece?
Yes.
Loud voices pretty much is, is big concern, is the music and loud art.
Well, and Eric, you can address that.
What they're indicating is, as far as voices is concerned, is correct, but the other, and the other situations as far as, uh, music that is subject to amplification and, and motors and things of that nature are, are all subjects of our ordinance right now, and there can be enforcement on those things, so.
Please don't hear it, they won't do nothing about it.
Well.
I'm sorry.
No, that's all, that's all right. The, um, I know the, uh, the city prosecutor has, has counseled the, uh, the police department that they, in those circumstances, will need to get victim statements. Uh, people will need to, to swear out complaints and be willing to sign and testify, uh, in those circumstances, and, and sometimes as a practical matter, that ends up causing an issue, I know. But, uh, but because of the moves in, in constitutional law, it is more and more necessary that there are people that sign, uh, victim statements and are willing to testify in court subsequently.
All the loud gatherings that are going for, no matter how long, and our peace means nothing, we can't, we can't do a thing about it.
I'm, I, I didn't say that, I, I'm just saying, as far as voices are concerned, that's where the, that's where the court decision has come down and greatly hampered what cities can do. But there are other issues that can be addressed. As I said, you know, motors, uh, things that are subject to amplification, but, and, and those kinds of issues, littering, uh, they all can be addressed, yes.
Well, you can start with Jimmy Jones, all their delivery people.
Yeah.
It just booms, it vibrates our house from their cars.
Well, the, the police department should follow up and investigate on those things and, and obtain that necessary information.
In a recording of the loud noises, voices.
I would, as far as voices are concerned, probably not.
Probably not.
But as far as the other things, yes.
Okay. And what, and a comment from police?
If, if you, uh, call us, uh, you know, of course, we'll come out and investigate, but like he said, the voices, we can't do anything about the nuisance parties, uh, when you got ten or more people gathered on the premises and they're, uh, fighting, littering, urinating, any of those things, mind, underage drinking, that's a nuisance party.
Are more still in effect?
Yes.
I quoted that also, Owens, and he says, no.
He said his name. Look at the litter. And then people now.
That's what I was always told, is they yell at over ten people.
Well, stay, uh.
The yelling, no.
Chapman, uh, stay with, stay with staff, and, and let's, let's kind of work, keep working together. What about the, the, the trash?
The trash is certainly something that we can cite, uh, the violators for.
I don't know how long those bags have been there, but there were numerous bags just laying on the ground.
There's some more fuel there now. These pictures from in the past, from I don't know how long ago.
Yeah.
I think the owner, Mark Harold, actually had been found one time. Is that bug litter? He has, he has improved it some, but it's not always.
Okay, well, let's, let's stay with staff and, and, um, we'll continue to work.
Okay.
You mentioned you're gonna try to come and, and speak with them. I think that's, that's really a positive thing, and I think they can give you some hints on the types of things that would be good to get pictures of, the types of things that you would need to, to, to do write statements on and do, so you know what, to, to come, to concentrate on the right things, and, cause I, I can sense your frustration, and I'd be frustrated too. And so, so maybe we can help you to, to know what one thinks, and then we can take act of the types of things we can take action on, and, uh, and then follow through. But it will, it's, it's gonna be a, a process, it's gonna take a while, and, um, we'll, we'll work there, but we'll, we'll go through it with you, and I think if you'll, uh, follow up, like you said, you're gonna meet, I think that's, that's the first step.
One policeman told me that there had to be conflict in order for peace disturbance. I said, you mean I gotta go there and knock one up?
No, but just, just, just come, just come and communicate with us, and, and thank you for communicating to Council, we appreciate you being here. Anyone else, uh, for the Council on any item not on the agenda? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name's Christine Rice. I live on North Clark Street, not too far from Bingo World and the Senior Center. And we've recently heard about a Habitat for Humanity Community of Hope that they're planning to put there. And I'm very concerned about if Clark Street is extended through. Has a traffic study been done, or what would we need to do to get a traffic study done? Our street's extremely busy, people definitely don't drive the speed limit on our street. We hear people slamming on their brakes constantly before they turn to Lombardo because they don't realize that there's a ninety-degree turn there. And many of us are very concerned that if Clark is opened up, it's gonna become a major throughway for people looking to cut from Perryville to Broadway or to King's Highway because we already have so much traffic going over to Cape Rock. Um, how could I find out about a traffic study if it's been done, or what we would need to do to request one?
I believe, uh, there is gonna be a, a meeting that the developer's going to hold this Thursday. I think that'd be a good place to come and, and, uh, iterate your concerns. Um, as far as a, as a traffic study, I don't, uh, I don't know, I don't, I'm pretty sure one has not been done, but Molly, I don't know if, if, uh, the developer's provided any information on that.
No, and the, the concern was raised at the last community meeting that was held on October third, uh, in this room, and I believe the developer was gonna take a lot of the concerns that he heard at that meeting and come back on the twentieth with responses to some of those concerns, so, um, I would advise you to come on Thursday evening.
Okay, yeah, cause we have small children and, you know, pets that get loose, and it's already scary, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else, any item not on the agenda?
I'm Steve Festi, in case anybody doesn't know me.
We all know you, Steve.
Yeah. And we, we do have some concerns, but maybe it might be preliminary for you guys because we've heard a little bit about the plat, a little bit what's going on, but have you guys seen anything revised since initially was put out?
Nothing's come to us as a council at this point.
Well, there's several issues that, that we heard that were concerned about. A lot is the drainage, um, a lot of it is about how this came about, um, far as the development getting put through, and not everybody that adjoins the ground got notified. So I was just curious what you guys knew about it and, and how this kind of, this kind of fell in our lap. Um, but possibly you guys don't know enough about for me to even get into this stuff. It might be the best for us to wait and look at what they came back with.
I think that again, Steve.
Yeah.
Um, come Thursday evening.
Okay. Um, one thing I do want to bring up is we have the whole south line of that property that's gonna get developed. And for years, we have struggled with the water coming off of Ricardo, Stoddard, Luanda. Well, that's been forty-five years. Well, we've, we keep getting this water, and then the Red Oaks subdivision got put in, and it dumped some more water on our property line, so we've got a huge ditch over there that we can't do anything with. And I've talked to the city through the years, and they always said, well, these streets up at Ricardo and all them are gonna get developed someday, and we're gonna worry about all this stormwater then, and that's gonna go away. So I really want this to get addressed.
I do know that, that Red Oaks and any other, any new subdivision has to, has to meet codes for water detention, um, and that's, through our cities, really worked well for us, and I think we've made a lot of progress there. But, but there will have to be, uh, to, uh, to code an ordinance, uh, water detention, I guess, that can, but that has to be when they put a, put a subdivision in.
Sure, and, and what I heard on this development is they're not even gonna connect them streets, which I would've thought the city would've wanted them because they haven't been under codes ever since they've been there. I mean, the garbage truck has to back down the hill, the fire truck can't turn around. I just can't imagine that they'd put a development through and wouldn't connect them, them streets. Plus, it would give other arteries out other than just two ways in and out of a brand-new development with forty-plus houses or whatever's going in. So I definitely have some concerns on what's going on, and I can't believe the city is not gonna try and correct some of the problems that they've had for years and years and years.
Not here yet. I, I'd suggest you come Thursday night, get, get started with it.
I guess.
And see what the, what they present, what options might, might be.
So they're, they're presenting this to, to everyone then at that point?
No.
On Thursday evening, the developer is hosting another community meeting to, to hear concerns and also respond to the concerns that were presented at the, uh, the first community meeting. It's my understanding that he and his engineer have come up with some, uh, different alternatives and some options that, um, they're going to present to the community members that show up and try to work through some of the issues that have been identified.
So it's not, it's not gonna get presented to you guys till after that?
They, they have to resubmit plans to the, the City Development Services Department before it would be scheduled for review by the, the City Council.
Okay, well, maybe you can answer this question, do, when a new development comes in, do they not send out letters to adjoining property owners anymore?
If it's under the same zoning that it, as it currently exists, they, they do not.
They do not.
It's not a requirement of the state, it's not a requirement of our charter, so in those conditions, we don't. Uh, typically, people are developing their land. In that situation, they, they purchased it at a certain zoning, and so, that's the reason we encourage people to, to look at the zoning around where they are because that, that can action, and that's what's planned to action. Now then, if they change the zoning, then of course, then we do notify the adjoining, or if they want a special use permit, those things do, um, require us, and we do do those, uh, contacts of the adjoining property owners because of a, a change in that zone.
We do have a fact sheet over by the front door on the Habitat project, just explaining a little bit about how the subdivision process works, and it talks about the, the public notification and how, uh, Missouri law does not require, or city law does not require that for, for subdivisions, but hopefully this will answer some of your questions just procedurally, how things are approved and where we are in the process.
Well, everything is gonna be, have to be done under R1. There'll be, the lot size will have to be a certain size, the streets will have to be a certain size.
That's correct, and this addresses that, this is a, a cluster subdivision within the R1 zoning, but it does, uh, address that as well as it would have to be built to all of our engineering specs in terms of street, water, sewer, et cetera.
Okay, well, I guess we'll come to that, and then will we have an option to come and talk to you guys before you, you looking past this thing?
Absolutely.
So, and I guess that'll all be up for information cards.
Absolutely.
We're always open during study session for anybody to come and speak to us on any item not on the agenda, what you're doing now.
Sure.
And then when it is on the agenda at seven o'clock, uh, during that time, uh, we'll address any, anybody that wants to speak to the Council on any item that is on the agenda that night. So if it does, does get on the agenda, then certainly you have, you have option to come visit with the Council.
Well, then it might be premature, I get to see, you know, how they're gonna lay it out, but I, I was, I was a little bit amazed that they did not connect the existing streets up there to that development, because that's always what I told, was told, and that was gonna solve some of my issues, which was gonna bring them city streets up there to code like they should be. Because I don't even know that Stoddard Court, I don't even know if they have a fire plug on that street.
Um, can't, no.
But anyhow, I guess we'll, we'll wait and look at it, and then we'll go from there, so.
Go from there.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Steve, for being here.
Appreciate everything you guys do, and like.
Thanks, Steve.
Anyone else? Any item not on the agenda? All right.
How are you guys doing?
We're good.
I was just coming to let you know that we elected a vice president at our meeting at the first of the month. Dan Presson from the Parks Board is now the vice president and the new spokesman for the neighborhood.
All right, great. Very good. Keep them firing. Anyone else? Anyone here? Any item not on the agenda? Okay?
Okay, we do have, uh, one presentation tonight, uh, will be the two thousand Domestic Violence Awareness Month. I believe, uh, Safe House will be here to accept that, uh, and then, uh, Communications and Reports, um.
Something about Freedom Fest.
And the others, uh, besides Freedom Fest?
I wanna talk a little bit, I wasn't here, of course, last session, but, uh, Heritage Days, and I wanna present to the city, I was presenting, I presented to the city the plaque of the Baudor Key of the LST that I presented that day, so I'll officially do that tonight. Comment about fire and police, uh, uh, groundbreakings, making great progress there in infrastructure. Excited about what's going on there. Um, I, uh, attended and kicked off Homeless Connect again this year, and over a hundred volunteers, this is, I think, fourth, fourth year I've been at, at Osage. Over and served about four hundred, uh, people, uh, at that event. Um, great. at that event, um, great event, again, volunteers mean so much to, uh, to making that work, Cape County Transit, uh, transported over a hundred, uh, to that event, no charge that day, and, and, just a, just a great event, so lift that up. And then we were out at, uh, the Business Park today for Pepsi and, uh, at their official ribbon cutting, they've been in business, but this was their official ribbon cutting, so it was a great celebration, and I observed, as I walked, or I drove, um, LaSalle, that without a vision of TTF, we, we kind of, on the planning committee way back, took some heat about doing LaSalle outside the city, that was a visionary, we said it was a visionary, um, undertaking, and I see a new water tank out there, I see the Business Park, more dirt turning at the Business Park, I see both, uh, duplexes on the south side, more dirt being turned on the south side, new subdivision on the north side, and more dirt being turned on the south side, touchdown ridge, and, and, and there's a lot of activity there that just would flat not be there without, without LaSalle, so I wanna make a comment about that. Other council?
I've got a couple of thank yous that I'd like to go over.
Okay.
Uh, one is for the, uh, the partnership between Cape Fire Department and the Red Cross and Fire, uh, Smoke detectors, and then also a thank you to Kevin and the Alliance guys on an issue we hadn't worked for.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay.
Uh, Steph, we're gonna have, Julia's gonna report on the, uh, NRPA conference that they went, it's the national conference, they had, happened to be in San Luis, so more of her staff was able to go than normally, and, and I can't imagine that she'll come to the mic and not talk a little bit about spaghetti day and haunted hall of horrors, but, uh, whatever happens, so.
Hey, I, I kinda think that's already gonna happen, but we already, we already got propaganda here.
Yeah, so likely to happen.
Anything else?
Missing staff? Okay, uh, we have no public hearings tonight, and then we have a pretty extensive consent agenda, we have the minutes, and then we have, uh, the three second and third readings of the, the, uh, uh, special tax bills for demolitions, that's two, three, and four, uh, number five is a, uh, permanent, corrected permanent easement of Forest Hills Estates subdivision, and then, uh, number six is the, um, buying the land next to Fire Station One, uh, for, for that, that's, um, second, third of that, and then, uh, number seven will be, uh, the rezoning from M2 to C2 for Deerfield Dog, uh, Dog Daycare, and number eight is, uh, second, third for the apartments up at, uh, Sprig and Lexington, uh, number nine is the, um, special, uh, use permit for Happy Tales, and then number ten will be a record plat for Forest Hills Fifth Edition, uh, eleven is a, uh, an act that council was required to do, because this, uh, project is in our city, it's for Saint Francis to, uh, refinance some projects through the Industrial Development Authority, uh, through this, uh, County of Cape, so we, uh, need you to take action on that, so that they can, uh, refinance that, and then, uh, number.
No cost to the city?
Uh, yes, thank you, no cost to the city. Um, fiber optic improvements, uh, those bids were, were open, and, uh, that will get fiber optics to the, uh, police and, uh, police station and the courts, and the fire station four, and then, uh, thirteen will be a, um, license and abdunity agreement with, uh, the university, uh, in order to install some fiber optic along Independence between Pacific and Ellis. Um, fourteen will be a release of a lane, um, and, uh, the owner of that property passed away, and then according to our, our lien on that, uh, that is released, and then, uh, fifteen and sixteen, we're applying for some sidewalks, uh, through a grant program of MODOT, uh, called Transportation Alternative Programs, these are sidewalks on, uh, Independence from the roundabout to the trail, and then, um, uh, on Cape Rock Drive from King's Highway all the way to Perryville, so hopefully we can receive those grants and improve, uh, the sidewalks in those areas. Seventeen will be an escrow agreement for Baldwin Village out, uh, in the, in the, uh, visionary LaSalle, uh, Business Park area, and, uh, then eighteen will be, uh, a, a contract, uh, for access control software, this will be for our, uh, new police station and fire station, the, the fire remodels, um, we, uh, looked at how we should control access, uh, instead of using the old key system, uh, we'll be using, uh, name tags and magnetic, uh, proximity readers on those, uh, to control that access, and that will change how we do that throughout the city eventually, but this is a start of that now through those projects, and, um, and then we just have one new, uh, new ordinance tonight, and that is for Record Platte Riverview Gardens, and, um, any questions on either of those, or are there anything on the consent agenda that you want to remove?
Would you comment on fifteen and sixteen? Those sidewalks were originally proposed in the Missouri Moves, uh, program at our CPO meeting, we thought we had those pretty well, uh, in hand to, to get approved, we thought there was enough dollars there to get those approved, Jackson had a, had a, uh, proposal too, and then the governor withheld, uh, the Missouri Moves, so this is a, says an alternative program, but it's an alternative to, to do this.
Yeah.
Still hopeful that maybe that Missouri Moves may come back, Molly, this says no, but one of the two, hopefully, those were, those are great sidewalk projects, and, and through one of the, of, of the two of those, that we'll get those.
Yeah, we have a lot of pedestrians on both of those roads, you can see paths worn in those areas, so.
Yeah.
Really is, uh, is a good opportunity.
I don't have any questions, but I'll, I'll be excusing myself on thirteen, because I'm on four.
Thirteen, Bruce? Okay. Then we do have, uh, some appointments tonight, um, for the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, Mayor?
Yeah, and, uh, uh, that'll be, uh, the reappointment of Percy Houston, the recommendations, uh, come to us for Tracy Glenn and Angel Hillman, uh, for two of those appointments, and then not on your sheet is a reappointment of Terry Slattery, and there was some confusion whether his, uh, application for reappoint, or whether he wanted to be reappointed, uh, was in, but he has stated that he would like to be reappointed, and I'd like to honor that request, uh, this evening, and reappoint, uh, Terry Slattery, uh, to Parks and Rec, so it would be Glenn, Hillman, Houston, and Slattery as recommended, uh, to us, any questions about that?
If you want to indicate your support for Slattery, you'll need to write it in.
Correct, yeah, that's right, cause it's not on the, it's not on the sheet, and we would then make sure, Bruce, tomorrow, that that, uh, application is, is in the end, and the planning and zoning, uh, our reappointments of Larry Doughty, Kevin Greaser, and Jeff Glenn, I know we just appointed, uh, Kevin Greaser to an, uh, uh, term that was gonna exit, uh, in, in just a couple months, but, uh, those will be all three reappointments for planning and zoning. And then, uh, in your memos, we've got two that I would suggest, and, uh, that council will kind of pay attention to, and two, oh, one of them is the revenue and expense for year-end, um, that John, uh, puts together, thank you, John, and, and then also our semi-annual summary of TTF, uh, one and two are off the books now, and, uh, three, four, and five are, are reviewed now and updated, we get a semi-annual, so, uh, pay attention to those, if you need a hard copy of those, um, they can be, they can be supplied. And then I had a note that, uh, we'll have several scouts here tonight, and, uh, who would like to, uh, speak to the scouts, some of our, our council? Volunteers? I need somebody. Don't fight over it. Okay, Mayor Pro Tem has been selected, if not volunteer, but been selected. I appreciate that, doing that for the, uh, for the Boy Scouts, always good to have scouts here with us.
Absolutely.
Any, um, anything else, council, that have come before us at the study session? If not, um, we will, uh, be working on a closed session tonight for legal actions litigation, confidential communications, or the legal counsel and personnel matters pursuant to revised statute six, ten, oh, twenty-one, one and three, if I could have a motion.
I'm in.
And seconded by Gar, so in favor, aye?
Aye.
As opposed? Okay, we'll stand adjourned and reconvene.
So who's gonna do it?
For Android? Or, ooh, um, Bruce should, for all yours, yeah.
I'll pack the dead batteries.
Hey buddy, how are you?
I'll only put what I don't need into a duffel bag.
Perfect, that's totally unhelpful.
No problem.
Meanwhile, I will try to comfort everyone by speaking in a calm voice.